Good evening, if you go ahead and call the special call meeting to order. At this time, I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Jackson if you'd be okay to give us an indication.
Everybody in spirit, Father, we just thank you for this day, and thank you for another opportunity to come forward with our. Oh God, we constantly keep out of our fears, pangs, oh God, knowing that you care for us. You said that if we're calling for you, you'll show us greater mind of things than we know it not. Oh God, so we call on you, oh God, asking for wisdom, asking for guidance, asking that you would work in us to accomplish your will and yours alone. Oh God, we pray for the city of Selma as a whole, all the citizens, oh God, we just pray for the leaders that own this town this afternoon. Oh God, just give us God's wisdom in all aspects of our lives and in government. Oh God, we just thank you that all is well, because when it's all said and done, we know who's in control. In Jesus' precious righteous name and prayer.
Let us stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with everything and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. President, Cory Bowie, President, Carboleye, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson.
Here.
Uh, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Here.
Councilman Sam Randolph, Councilman Jennifer Shore. Councilwoman Janet Thomas.
Here.
Councilman Michael Thompson. Okay, as stated before, we do have a court to handle business. At this time, uh, councilmembers here before you, the original agenda, I think Councilwoman, uh, Jackson would like to amend, the agenda to add A trip two, as a business item. Okay, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Mr. President, I possibly have, um, some resolutions on here, but, um, let me just say possibly. Mr. President.
Yes ma'am, Councilwoman.
I'd like to add the, um, attorney general interviews, like I received a phone call from the mayor's office about thirty minutes ago about attorney general interviews, so let me add that, so I can talk about that.
Hey, Mr. President.
The Councilman.
Um, you know, just for the amount of information for discussion, I wanna add, uh, people that's being proposed by Congresswoman Terry Soro and Tom, uh, Representative Thomas out of New York, uh, an infrastructure bill. Uh, this bill will help us tremendously if it's, if it's passed by the House, and hopefully it's passed by the Senate. Uh, this will give some resources for us to address our infrastructural needs. I would also inform my allies that, uh, Senator Dillard Thomas is also, is a submitted a little bill that will be very advantageous for us as well. Uh, I passed out a flyer that would detail exactly what Congresswoman Soro will be able to tell. And of course, whatever needed, but the thing that really concerned me was when, uh, we got down to the actual normal months, which would have to come from the fakes and then get paid by the government. Of course, I'm prepared to raise a meeting, be a problem, we never know. We're just waiting to see, hopefully, and it will pass the House and the Senate.
Are there any additional, Councilwoman?
I would like to add, uh, to this business item about, uh, about the loss of the city building. And I just wanted to, I want to get to me, I will explain something.
See the loss?
Yes.
Are there any additional items? Any additional items? At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to approve a regular.
Second.
That has been amended, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Benjamin.
Youngblood.
Youngblood, Councilwoman Youngblood, seconded by, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin.
Mr. President, you can hold it right there for me.
Yeah, you can, yeah.
God bless you.
All right, thank you so much. Yes.
She's out now.
Yes. At this time, uh, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Youngblood, seconded by Councilwoman, um, Benjamin. Roll call, Councilwoman Jackson.
Yes. Roll call, President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilwoman, Councilman Carboleye. Councilwoman Susan Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maya Jackson, yes. Councilwoman Angela Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Sam Randolph. Councilman Jennifer Shore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janet Thomas.
Yes.
And Councilman Michael Johnson.
All right, the agenda was approved unanimously by the members of the House. Council members, our first item on the agenda is, uh, Interim Chief Robert Green contract. Our fourth contract to, uh, um, what's it called, it's on two, I think it was. Uh, hopefully everyone has had the opportunity to prove the minutes. Are there any discussions at this time? Any questions? Go ahead, Councilwoman Youngblood.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President, I, I'm just, I, I think that I'm joined with the other councilmembers in saying how delighted we are to, uh, have Chief Green agree to come back and help us, uh, navigate this, this, this time of difficulty that we're having. Uh, one thing I did want to mention, and I'm, and just trusting that it won't, that it won't be an issue. Uh, you know, we've gone through a lot with, with, um, our treasurer's way. And in the course of the legal issues there, the judge, our circuit, one of our circuit court judges, uh, Judge Don McMillan, wonderful person, wonderful judge, uh, he there proved, um, you know, during the interim, that, and, and in, in part of his final ruling was that, um, that council appointments are council appointments. And essentially that the, the council appointees should be able to function, do their duties in and of each other now. So, and, and not be, um, I don't know, it's too strong a language, but, but anyway, should, should be able to perform their duties without interference from any other branch of government. So I just wanted to put that out there and say, we're all expecting, um, Chief Green to be able to perform his duties without being, having interference from any other branch of government in any other purpose. We have the highest hopes for, um, uh, I think that there's a lot of hope in the city. I, I've had a lot of people mention that to me, uh, thinking there's a lot of hope with fellow law enforcement, not just the Selma PD, but others. So I see Chief Green out there, welcome back for, for a while, as long as we're in proportion enough to have, so, um, just want to put that out there.
Thank you, Councilwoman Youngblood, Councilwoman.
I want to, uh, welcome Chief Green back again, uh, certainly the man for the job and for the hour. I hope that you have a smooth entrance into the public safety building on tomorrow. If you, if you do not, if you need backup, well, you won't, you need backup because you're Chief Green. But I'm just saying, uh, call us if you need us. But I am hoping for a smooth entry into the building. I'm hoping, uh, for a fabulous and wonderful day on, it is tomorrow, right? Fabulous and wonderful day on tomorrow, uh, with you. I know the officers are looking forward to having you on tomorrow. I'm looking forward to having you on tomorrow, and for the duration of whatever this contract says is the end. I want to thank you for, uh, your spirit and, and, and saying, um, how you're gonna come in, you're gonna come in ready to work and to assist, and that has always been you. You have always said, "I'm here to assist any time," and any time that we have called you, because this is not the first time we've actually called you. Actually, any time that we have called you, you have come back to assist the home team. And for that, I am very, very appreciative and thank you. And, and so, again, if you need us, call us tomorrow.
All right, any other comments for Chief Green? All right, at this time, the chair will put a motion on the floor to approve the contract, uh, for the ninety day period.
Second.
Chief Robert W., we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Shore, seconded by Councilwoman Youngblood. Any further discussion? Roll call, Councilwoman Jackson.
Okay, she can give the motion now, okay?
I told you.
Boy, she didn't know. All right, um, President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilman Carboleye, Councilwoman Susan Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maya Jackson, yes. Councilwoman Angela Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Sam Randolph. Councilman Jennifer Shore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janet Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Michael Johnson.
All right, the contract was, was approved unanimously, Councilwoman Bowie. Okay, before I hand the chief forward, I'm also, we have to do a resolution appointing on interim basis. We have a resolution number R one forty-one, the appointment of interim chief Robert Green for ninety days.
So movement.
So we have a motion on the floor, we have a motion by Councilwoman Benjamin, seconded by Councilman Shore. Are there any other comments? Questions? Roll call, Councilwoman Jackson.
Council President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilman Carboleye, Councilwoman Susan Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maya Jackson, yes. Councilwoman Angela Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Sam Randolph. Councilman Jennifer Shore.
Yes.
Councilwoman Janet Thomas.
Yes.
Councilman Michael Johnson.
The vote was approved unanimously, uh, Councilmembers, uh, Bowie. Chief Green, we have a question.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just think of the worst.
You have some barriers.
Oh, yes, Michael Johnson, Michael Johnson is running for office, like, Councilwoman.
I got a big mouth, I really don't need that.
Well, this was a video.
This was a video, so, so the people that are.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got that one, no. Now we got that hard, but.
Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am.
Well, this is my third time being back and serving as chief police and Selma Police Department. I'm very enthusiastic about coming back and helping out. I appreciate the unanimous vote. I told Council President Bowie, if the vote had been unanimous the first time, I would have worked for free. I told him I didn't want to make the negative vote. But that was the whole time. But, uh, I'm glad to be back, and I have not been in the office yet. I've been at Alabama Association of Chiefs of Police Conference the entire week. Some very, very good training, I'm all about training, myself as well as the staff at the Police Department. So hopefully tomorrow, when I go to Police Department, I'll be able to get into the office, because I have not been in, I have not even been at the Police Department, uh, since the council decided to make me interim chief a couple of weeks ago. But I'm ready to move forward. There are a lot of issues that need to be dealt with, there are a lot of problems that are waiting in my attention. Uh, a lot of people have been blowing my phone up from the Police Department. So I'm ready, I'm ready to go over there and tackle the problems that are waiting me. And I appreciate you guys for giving me the opportunity to serve the citizens of Selma once again.
My, uh, Chief.
Councilwoman Youngblood.
Don't go away so fast. Um, you'd say in the morning, right?
Yes ma'am.
Over there, because it's Alabama.
Thirteen hundred Alabama.
Thirteen hundred Alabama. Well, I'd like to bring some doughnuts, if y'all have coffee maker suddenly down the shift.
I don't know what they are.
I've got, I've got a little Mr. Coffee maker here, nobody else, you can take, you can take it tonight, I'll bring us some doughnuts in the morning. Baked, bakedish. Edgier, more edgier today.
I, I, Councilwoman, I thought you were gonna say you were gonna bake something, I, I didn't know, I didn't know, I'm not part of the doughnut thing, so I'm not saying that you all eat doughnuts over there, but I would love to help you get some doughnuts. To take, to take the doughnuts over there, I thought she was gonna do her famous baking. At, at the clock, ladies, at the clock, police private stuff.
I don't have time to bake, I did make some little, some more things, they're up here, um, to make a stand.
Oh, thank you, okay, so we'll be back there. Chief, I'm, I'm glad you, uh, started that out on a, on a light note, uh, because, uh, one of the things I had, I wanted to make sure people knew that, uh, I'm on Chief Green's side, and he know what, he knows why I made my vote, because I'm a girl of my word. And my word was given to, uh, after speaking with and seeing all his documentation, checking his track record and talking to people. My word was first given to, uh, Lieutenant Fullford, and I'm a girl of my word. But I don't want anyone, anyone, anyone to think, uh, that this guy, who I've known from the nineteen hundreds, uh, is, 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 uh, anything contradictory to Angela Benjamin, I love this guy. And, uh, he, and I have been awaiting your arrival. So, uh, I, I, I just thank you, and, and again, safe entry to you, sir.
Thank you. I guess the council needs to do a parade and marching to the office.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. Uh, because we, uh, we do need someone to make sure that the city is safe and a lot of other things, we need somebody to come in to help. So I appreciate what you've been, to come back to.
Also, too, Chief, you did mention to me that you would be attending council meetings, working sessions.
Awesome, so.
And also, warranties in my career.
When I'm paid to do a job, I always see proof.
All right, any other questions? Councilman Shore.
Chief, welcome back. I guess you know that you're important to that.
Oh, yes, I was scared.
I'm ready to read the, uh, Thursday edition of the Selma Daily Journal about some issues that's taking place on the Selma Police Department. Hopefully, with your presence, that will soon be put to rest. I think what's gonna be important is protocol. Protocol, it must be, uh, the mainstay of having a good operation. And I think if protocol is followed, I think probably will be done. I think you're the man for the job, and you just want to be respectful, uh, agreed, you're gonna back, you know what I'm saying?
I'm all about accountability, and I, I realize the problems that are waiting me over there, and, uh, I think it's need, needs some leadership, and that's what I, hopefully, I can provide.
Any other questions for Chief?
Uh, Mr. President, I hate to be preachy about Target tonight, but, um, the, Chief, um, a few nights ago, the Public Safety Committee met by request of the Police Department, but some of the police officers had asked him to meet with us, if they had some new valid concerns. And they had asked us to, to do, we asked them what were some things that they felt like we could do. And they asked us pointedly to do some things, um, and, and I, I, I had told them that, that we would do some things in the morning. I want to explain that, uh, but one of those things, we feel like is best to wait and let you look at those. There's one of them I'm gonna talk to you about before you leave. One of them being, there is one of them that I would like to go ahead and address, uh, well, it doesn't have, it's about equipment and cars and, and things like that, to, to go ahead and, and, and move on, get, uh, the council to sign, about getting the automobiles and the equipment, the funds released for that, because those ones are budgeted and allocated. But would you rather we hold up on that?
Yes, one of the things you have to realize when working with me, the police chief is responsible for the organization and efficient operation of the city's Police Department. So if I had been in place, those officers never would have come before you, because I would have dealt with those problems.
They would have not had to come before us, Chief, I, I've worked with you the two times you were here before. As you know, we work closely together, and I know they would never have needed to come before us. So I, I feel like these things will be resolved pretty expeditiously.
Yes ma'am.
Um, before you leave, there's one thing I do want to talk to you on, Ash, get out. Thank you.
Also, too, Chief, uh, you still talking about the pen?
What, the what?
The pen, the ink pen. You said that's, that's your weapon.
This is the most powerful instrument. There he is. Amen. And I know how to use it.
It's better than this.
And if you don't know how to use it, you're not strong.
All right, instance, article number two, landfill contract for lease, uh, purchase. I know in our last council meeting, I think, we allocated, I think, fifteen thousand dollars, and I thought that it was clear, uh, authorized the mayor to move forward to sign the financial proposal for the, uh, excavator, uh, either lease or purchase. So at this time, we, we did, but, uh, it wasn't clear, but I, I told him I was telling that. Uh, so do I have a motion on the floor? We have a motion by Councilman.
Is it the same motion? She, she got a right.
Oh, okay, okay. Authorized the mayor to move forward with the financing proposal for the excavator, either to lease or purchase.
Is this the same motion as the, as the last council meeting? So we just, uh, reaffirming?
Yes.
Okay.
Roll call, Councilwoman Jackson.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Councilman Carboleye, Councilwoman Susan Youngblood.
Yes.
Councilwoman Maya Jackson, yes. Councilwoman Angela Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Sam Randolph, Councilman Jennifer Shore. Councilwoman Janet Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman Michael Johnson.
Okay, uh, the motion passed.
Mr. President.
Yes ma'am.
Since we're on the, the subject of the landfill, um, I don't know if you recall, but la, about a year ago, when we were working on the budget, I had asked, and I believe the council voted to, to, to put in seventy-five hundred dollars to get a, um, an industrial grade wood chipper that we were gonna be able to get for a song, literally, from Ricky Shelby at Blackout Landscaping. And then I had brought it up a couple of other times, and then recently we discussed it, because, um, we are at such a crisis point at the landfill. And just the, the whole, uh, in fact, I had talked with Larry Grody and the mayor about it. We had a whole proposal outlay to have a place out where Joy Baptist Temple is, right off Highway eighty, to have a, the, uh, recycling, composting, little place done. But anyway, I'm asking this because I've gotten the purchase order, I mean, I've gotten the, um, quote from Ricky Shelby, and they do a purchase order, and I have a resolution done, um, if we need to do that, so we can go ahead and do that. Now, I don't remember where we had put that money that it would come from, but I do remember when we did the budget that we had. Does anybody else remember that?
I remember, we talked about it, but I.
Are you looking for any? I think that we have, we're looking for it.
That's why I said you came in, but, but.
I did, I, well, may, maybe it was after the budget, but I do remember asking that we designate some fund, and there was some, and we did that, yeah. I mean, it was, I can't remember, okay, I can't remember what it was. There was some money created from something, I don't have.
Can we allow Mr. Wade to, uh, locate the funding? And then we just bring back the council.
Yeah, Mr. Shelby is, is pretty anxious to go, he'll deliver it, he's got it serviced, and he'll deliver it, um, wherever we want it, and so. But I just was, um, felt like this is the, um, optimal time, particularly since with the landfill. Because if we can chop up those, all those little, the limbs and mulch the leaves, and I, I'll tell you, I got a little, for my birthday, I got a little wood chipper, that's what I wanted. And I have chipped up some small limbs and have made mulch for my flower beds, and I love it, it's wonderful.
Mr. Wade, can you, uh, look into that right there at our council meeting, ma'am? Thank you, ma'am. Also, council members, uh, Mr. Wade, uh, sent out an email on Tuesday in reference to the landfill, the repair of the excavator, um, the needs repair, repairing, uh, the total amount was fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. But in that repair, in the repair line item, it only, they only have seven thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars. So to make up the difference, uh, we wanted to ratify a firm, where we'd be transferred fifty-four hundred dollars, uh, from the oil field, and two thousand dollars from the travel and trainings. I, I have four, I have four, uh, to make up the fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars to amend the budget. So at this time, the chair will entertain a motion to amend the budget to allow the excavator to be repaired. It was a total of fourteen thousand seven hundred dollars. Do I have a motion on the floor?
Somebody.
Do I have a motion on the floor to amend, do we have a second? Second, Councilwoman Thomas. Motion was made to amend the budget, uh, by Councilwoman Youngblood, seconded by Councilwoman Thomas. At this time, the chair will entertain a roll call, Councilwoman Jackson.
President Bowie.
Yes.
Car, Councilman Carboleye, Councilman Susan Youngblood, yes. Councilwoman Maya Jackson, yes. Councilwoman Angela Benjamin.
Yes.
Councilman Sam Randolph, Councilman Jennifer Shore.
Yes.
Councilman Janet Thomas.
Yes.
Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilman Michael Johnson.
Okay, the motion was unanimous. Also, council members, I forward to a film permit for, uh, we have several DAs coming out on September sixteenth, uh, wanting to do a documentary on the bridge, add four to the film permit. Hopefully, everyone has had an opportunity to prove the film permit. It's gonna be September the sixteenth, around nine-thirty on the bridge. We're looking at about over a hundred and fifty DAs coming around, around the world, coming to sell on that day. So at this time, the chair will entertain. Yes, sir. I think the max we can do is five hundred. They got some of the people coming in, yeah, I sit out there, councilor. Do I have a motion, we have a motion by Councilwoman Shore, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Thomas. Any further discussion? Roll call. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
What was that motion, ma'am, to approve the film permit?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. I give you a couple.
Okay. Motion by Councilman LaShaw. Second, Councilwoman. President Cora Bowie?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Councilman Carl Bolin. Councilwoman Susan Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Maya Jackson, yes. Councilwoman Angela Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilman Sam Randolph. Councilman Jonathan LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thompson?
Yes.
Okay, the motion was passed, is unanimous. Next, this is our, Councilwoman Jackson. A trip two.
Yes, sir. Okay, one second. Move to the next. Yes. A trip project, if I can ask Mr. Ray Hogg to come up. On Tuesday, about four thirty, we received an email last from the legal municipalities that made all of the municipalities aware that thirty million dollars of A-trip funding was available for application for infrastructure projects based on the new gas tax that has been allocated. And immediately after reading that email and reviewing the application, I contacted Mr. Hogg and asked him if it was their process, if it's something that they generally did for the city. Because I knew our meeting would, our next meeting would be on the thirteenth, and the application is due on the thirtieth or the thirty-first of August. The thirtieth of August. So they sent it out, and then we would have thirty days to complete the application and get it in. And so I asked Mr. President if he would allow me to come to this meeting to discuss their A-trip project and what he proposes for the city.
Go ahead, Mr. Hogg. Okay, thank y'all, and I brought my boss along, Willie Meredith, I think most of y'all know her. And payday is tomorrow, so I think you can sign my check for her. She is my boss, really. All right, y'all are familiar with the gasoline tax that the state just passed. This is a result of it. You know, we're going to pass it, I think, in increments, go up two cents a year. I don't remember exactly how. But this is the Rebuild Alabama Act, and y'all, I'm sure y'all have all got a copy of it. They call it A-trip two. If you read this, the state will do between thirty million, they can do it every year, is my understanding. They do a minimum of thirty million dollars worth of projects, maximum of fifty million. And that's every year, so the gasoline tax apparently is going to generate pretty good revenue. For fiscal year 2020, they're going, they've set it at thirty million dollars. Every city and every county in the state is eligible to submit one application. Not multiple applications, not multiple streets. You can't pick and choose, and that's unfortunate. I know because y'all got, we got eight wards in our city. The maximum you can apply for is two million dollars, but I doubt they're going to get many two million dollar applications. I think in the past, you used the old A-trip money. They did J.L. Chestnut Boulevard, did Medical Center Parkway, and the last one would be Amelia Boynton Road, Somerville Road, by my mistake. And it has to be somewhat of a thorough factor, as I would call it. A connector road to a state highway. And, I mean, I thought of one, Ms. Jackson thought of one, and, but the council's going to have to agree, one, to submit the application, which we're prepared to do for y'all. Two, where you want to do it? Because they've got four weeks from tomorrow to submit it. And it would need to, although it doesn't say in the application guidelines anything about a resolution, I think you need to do it by resolution, what you want, what you want to do. Now, Ms. Jackson thought of all the streets downtown, and I think it's probably between Dallas Avenue, Water Avenue, and between Church Street and, Lawton Street. No, no, Franklin Street, I'm sorry. Those are your downtown streets. Some of them are not in bad shape as the others. The one that I thought about was Franklin Street from First Avenue to Highland Avenue behind Southern High School.
Yes.
So, I mean, that would be up to, there might be some others that I'm not, that aren't on my mind. J.L. Chestnut going which way? Marie Foster or J.L. Chestnut?
Marie Foster.
Marie Foster from J.L. Chestnut to Highland Avenue. Okay, that would be one. That would be on...
Can I keep the rest of that, of Point Street, which, you know, you did on the A-trip, you did a portion? And they stopped at the, right along, right in there on Bunton and Melton.
Could I get the rest of that, all the way, all the way down to Chestnut Boulevard? It's bad, that area is bad.
I don't like where you're talking about. All the way down to J.L. Chestnut. And, you know, you can, I mean, but there again, the council's going to have to agree to pick one project.
And do one project?
But now let me say this.
Define project?
Just a minute. You can, you can submit another one next year. You can submit one every year, because you may not get, it's a competitive, it's a, they have a committee, and it'll be a competitive process. So you may or may not get it every year, but you can submit one a year from what this information says.
Okay, so what you just said, Ms. Jackson, brought to your attention about what area, downtown area?
I'm just throwing that out there, I'm just making all the way of different ones. That's, Ms. Jackson brought that up, and the streets in the downtown area, especially Washington Street, and...
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
And some of the ones right in downtown, even, even to be quite honest, I mean, Water Avenue from Church Street to Broad Street, you know, where we've done so much work down there, the street skate, patching this, patching that, and that's a very important street. Historically, every year you have the Bridge Crossing Festival, that's right where that is. And it's pretty rough if you ride down through there. So that would be, that's one of your downtown streets.
But I think Councilwoman Thomas, then Councilwoman Benjamin, I think we probably need to move forward tonight to vote, to move forward for him to submit the application. Then we'll come back with a resolution. So we don't get to follow.
Right, if you're on us to proceed with going, and I can, here's what I can do, I can, I'll take suggestions. I know that, I can come up with cost estimates. I did a road estimate just on Franklin Street. It's going to cost between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's probably a good project to submit, because they've got sixty-seven counties, and they've got three hundred and four hundred municipalities. And thirty million dollars doesn't go quite so far when you divide it by that amount.
We can take that from the Brady Hall, Pity Cash.
Chief, no, no, that's fair. Councilwoman?
Yeah, I already, so we submitted Franklin more than once. We did the traffic counter. We've done everything possible on Franklin Street, and I don't know why it's continually rejected. So hopefully, hopefully, this project that I'm going to ask you the definition of, we can come up with a one project thing that includes the important streets. But I also, I'm just going to throw it out again, because I throw it out every time, North Broad Street. Throw it out there again, because eventually we're going to cave in on North Broad Street. But we have the data, we have all the data necessary for Franklin Street.
And let me say this, in the past, the A-trip funding, I think, had some federal funds in it. This is all state funding, from what I understand. And that changes the game. Maybe the criteria that they consider is not extrinsic is in the past.
Hopefully not, yeah. Hopefully not, because it is important. I want to go down to the definition of project. And so are you considering what Councilwoman Jackson said as a project? Or are you considering the voices here and saying, this could be a project if everything is contiguous? Does it have to be, does it have to be contiguous?
I think you would need to, like, the downtown streets, because they're perpendicular, and they're in the downtown area, and they all connect to Highway eighty, probably. I think that's important. And I would count that as one project. But then again, I'm not going to make a decision on which project y'all do.
No, no, no. That is important, the area that she pointed out is very important. I was trying to, I was trying to connect it to make it one project. And so that is why I needed the definition of what is a project? What if, like, can we connect to, every street she named is important, in particular, the district. Water Avenue, that's our district, and we need to keep that district up. When all the other streets in between it are just as important, Washington Street, all those sorts of...
Well, I think they could all be one project, because they all connect to the downtown area.
Uh-huh. But all these other streets we named are just as important, and I'm trying to see, would it make this, would this be one project or more than one project? Because it's not contiguous.
I would say the downtown would be a project. Franklin Street would be a project. Ms. Thomas, where she was talking about, from Manna Avenue to J.L. Chestnut would be a project. North Broad Street would be a project. That'd be four separate projects. But then again, you just do one every year and keep going.
Okay, so the project is not defined by the amount of money it would cost to do it, is defined by area?
That would be my, that would be the best way to submit. I think if you...
Is that right, boss lady? I'm going to ask the boss lady.
That's the way I would think it would be.
Okay, okay.
I don't think they want a piecemeal project.
I got you.
Stay in one area and do that.
But every year we can do it a different project.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Benjamin, we had Councilwoman Jackson, then Councilman LaShaw.
I have Marie Foster, that's all.
Councilwoman Jackson?
When I read over the application and called Mr. Hogg, I wasn't thinking about anything in particular. I was just thinking, infrastructure, we're paying into the gas tax and less supply. Thank you. However, when I was driving down by the courthouse, I was like, oh my goodness. So I called him immediately, because I thought, well, my goodness, we have so much traffic downtown, and we have so many visitors coming to the bridge. I got a call from yesterday about a bus being there, and we've almost getting hit coming across the bridge in the fact that we need to make it look more presentable. And so I thought about that and called him and said, you know, this may be a good project that we can all agree on, and maybe we can agree going forward, the projects for the next two years or the next four years. So if you say we're going to write for this project downtown this year, we'll definitely write this Frank for the next year. But we can also look at the A-trip one money versus A-trip two, because the old A-trip actually has a little bit of state and federal. Did they wipe the old A-trip out when they got all this money, or will it still be two separate?
I don't know if they did, because we just called it A-trip two.
Right. So I'm thinking that we may have an opportunity to have two separate projects, but if we have thirty million dollars, you know, I thought, why not start without downtown? That was just my philosophy.
We can apply for us two million, right?
Yeah, I would recommend that.
He wouldn't recommend two million.
No, I'm saying up to.
But you can, that's correct.
Councilman LaShaw?
You had a prior, during your presentation, with two hundred thousand, maybe, it was a little more favorable in Congress.
Two hundred, three hundred, four hundred would probably be more favorable, yes.
Okay, so what I'm suggesting is that maybe, you know, you take recommendations from all of those who want the project to be earmarked on their ward and give us a cost factor based on the cost to gun from J.L. Chestnut to Highland and what it costs now, or whatever. Just, I mean, just give us a cost factor.
I can, I can come up with a, that's one of these of the five areas that we've talked about. And then y'all can decide, or you might say, let's do a plan. Let's put this in our priority, and as we apply and it gets funded in one year, then we go into the next project the next year.
I like that. But then you just move forward.
And I can have that to you maybe one day next week, because y'all have a work session two weeks from now.
Twelve to thirteen, I think.
Twelve to thirteen.
Twelve to thirteen. It's been a long one.
Oh, yeah, twelve is money, and thirteen is cheap. Okay.
And I was just going to say this, and I hope that this time with the A-trip project, the money that you get, that's specified where it's supposed to be done. Like if we said we agreed to whatever section ward, that the work that be done, that we don't get cut, our money don't get cut from us to go somewhere else, because...
Yeah, you got to say where it's going, prompt where it's going to.
You know, I did, well, I got, I got cut in my ward. I was certain amount of money that I had been falling when I heard that they was going to do that in Ward Seven. But when it came down to the work, we were cut off a big portion of Ward Seven. That it was said that we had so much money that had been applied for that A-trip project. But then it didn't go all the way across.
One thing that Mr. Hogg said to me on yesterday was that the narrative is going to be the longest part. Whatever we decide is, whatever your expertise lends you to, it's fine with me. If it's not the downtown area, if you say, I just want us to get some funding. Can we agree tonight that, to allow him to make the final decision? Because if we wait until the thirteenth for him to vote on it, and he has to write the narrative, I don't want him pushed and pressed, and I want him to have all the time he needs to make the best...
I can write an act, pretty quick.
Yeah, he makes it, he do it in his sleep.
That's why I was having to get going on vote, move forward, for him to submit the application.
We can define it, so we can...
I can write a narrative and just fill in the blanks, where the rich script we're going to do a lot of.
We can vote to, so he can go ahead and move, and then we can come back and define the project.
All right, do we have a motion on the floor to move forward? Okay, right, motion by Councilwoman Youngblood, second by Councilwoman LaShaw, to move forward to submit the application. In the following discussion, road calls, Councilwoman Jackson.
Motion by Youngblood?
Yes, ma'am. Councilman LaShaw.
Not easy task.
It is not. I thought I was making notes, because just, we're both being, I would not expect this project to be... President Cora Bowie?
Yes.
Councilman Carl Bolin. Councilwoman Susan Youngblood?
Yes.
Councilwoman Maya Jackson, yes. Councilwoman Angela Benjamin?
Yes.
Councilman Sam Randolph. Councilman Jonathan LaShaw?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jamie Thompson?
Yes.
Councilman Michael Johnson?
All right. The vote was approved unanimously to move forward with the application for the A-trip two project. Next, we have Councilwoman Benjamin, A.G.'s office.
Okay, so, yeah. Today, I received a phone call from Mrs. Kriina Simmons. And I was wondering if y'all got the same one. I wait on Councilwoman Youngblood at this point. Waiting on the sidebar to end. Come on, honey.
And that's not good, it's probably.
Exactly.
Thank you so much.
But anyway, I got a phone call from Ms. Simmons, and so I'm going to ask you to probably pass this on to our attorney, but I wanted the council members to know why I was passing it on to the attorney, because it costs money. So I got a phone call from Ms. Simmons concerning the Attorney General wants to do an interview, and I'm not the only one that got a phone call, he just wants to do an interview. In the capacity, in my capacity, is Councilwoman. And so I asked, so the Attorney General reported to her, asked her to call me to see if I was available on next Wednesday to meet at the Federal Building. You know, and I have to check my calendar, you know, that, because my calendar's pretty busy. And so I said to, I asked who this person was, and I wrote it down and left it in the carpet, same name that the mayor called in court, and when we were in the courtroom, same name, Murphy, or something like that. And I asked for the phone number, because, you know, I like to call people and get it from the courses mouth. I was given a cell phone number, and I thought it quite odd to be given a cell phone number to call the Attorney General that wants to interview at the Federal Building about. So I asked what it was in reference to, and she said that he did not tell her what it was in reference to. And of course, I'll find the office number tomorrow and try to call the office, because I was given a cell phone number. I feel privileged to have a cell phone number of an Attorney General, though. But I would like to call him in his full capacity and at his office. So another council member called me, Councilwoman Sam Randolph, got the same phone call. He was not giving a date, he was asking if he would be available to have interviews. And he was like, I don't know anything, you know, and I'm not there. And she convinced to ask him when he would be available. And of course, he doesn't know whether he'll be home on a certain day or not. And so I would, because it's in the capacity of council members, I would like you... And uh, and so I would, because it's in the capacity of council members, I would like you, if you don't mind, and, and in case you all get the same phone call, that we pass this on to our attorney. And he lets me know whether to go in or not go into this interview, that the Attorney General called the mayor's secretary to call me, to set up a meeting with him. I didn't get a, a, a phone call from the Attorney General's secretary to set this up. And, and so, y'all know I would love to talk about this all night long and give my own opinion. Uh, but would you, would you pass that on to the attorney, please?
Okay, alright. Councilwoman.
I just. Was this the Attorney General out of Montgomery? The wife only, the name that was calling the boardroom when uh, um, our treasurer was home. Uh, and our, our attorney asked who was investigating her in the Mary Fox first name, Murray, Murphy, something like that. Oh, yeah, yeah. The, the same name, same person, and, and I was listening to his cell phone, and I was like.
Anything else?
Uh, the Congresswoman, uh, the scope of the infrastructure bill that our Congresswoman, this, this team of the representative uh Tom Vee out of New York. And it says both, both members of the House of Representatives introduced the Municipal Bond Market Support Act of twenty nineteen. A bipartisan legislation to help local governments, nonprofits, schools, hospitals, universities, and other entities reduce costs associated with infrastructure and development projects. As you very well know, our infrastructure here is somehow damaged, it's, it's in very, very poor condition. And as you very well know, we, we are attempting to pass a gasoline tax that will be earmarked that would bring about a, a, a fixture of these problems that is taking over our city. And the court back was doing that by this, by this council, without any other means of uh, of bringing about to fix the problem that is at hand, that is the road disrepair, the sewage and everything else that is with infrastructure. I'm hoping and praying that the House passes it, and I'm hoping and praying that the Senate wants to get to the Senate and pass it. You know, it must be passed by the House and afforded on to the Senate. And go to Senate made an order, now you just don't know what they're gonna do in Washington, DC. But that's Saint God is blessing us with a positive vote in both uh houses. Then someone will be eligible to apply for uh some infrastructure money. It used to be ten million dollars limit, but they increased it to thirty million. I also was informed by Allen, sometime Jonathan informed me of this, this uh bill that's being floated by the Congresswoman. Soon that there's another bill, Allen would turn this Jones about the bill that uh, some of the Joneses is gonna push for rural communities, I think you told me you're gonna pay, that you're gonna email that to me?
I'm actually doing that right now.
Okay, but could you just briefly tell us what that bill will involve, or tell?
Sure. Okay, um, let's see, uh, the title of it is uh Jones Provision to Provide New Funding for Roads and Bridges. It's included in a um, a bill that they just passed um for protect grants. And uh, let's see, real quick, um, the bill establishes a new program called Tech Grants that would provide one billion dollars each year for competitive grants, four billion dollars in formula funding for improving roads and bridges, road and bridge infrastructure. Uh, and then it also would, um, Jones Provision would provide funding to improve roadways in the state's small and rural communities. It would repair roadways and invest in evacuation routes in the city.
Okay, I'm gonna give both of these documents, one second, the, the documents from Senator Jones. I'm gonna give both the documents to Henry Thompson and uh Community Development Office. So that he can be uh aware of these possibilities being brought up and, and, and can track it and give us some updates as to where we are with the probability of these bills being passed. And once they are passed, then.
Yes, sir.
I guess the executive branch will take over and start uh determining how we can jump into these resources. Because uh, our, our streets are not gonna be fixed with current revenues. The current revenue that we've been receiving for the last nineteen years is not gonna be about fixing our roads and our, and our streets and the city itself. And uh, other resources are gonna have to take that amount off. And since the gasoline tax didn't pass, hopefully, this is something, but then once, once we go and borrow, like I said, twenty-five million to fix the streets itself, then naturally then uh, then sort of wanna, wanna know how big money gonna be used. And we may never have to revisit that gasoline tax, earmarked, taken one to fix our streets. So this is just something we can think about, this is something that we must do as, a better official here in the city itself. We cannot just sit back and just do nothing. So let's just wait and see what happens, this is gonna be open up.
Thank you, sir, Councilwoman Short. Alright, last item of tonight, Councilwoman Thompson.
I was, I was continuing to add another, I had two more to add. But I go with the first one. Okay, the number one, dealing with the lots that, that, uh, we did a vote back here recently about uh, because it's getting to be a problem. And I'm one of those type of people that uh, I, I believe in working with you if you're working with me right. But I shouldn't have to, uh, you're dodging and running, running you down, I'm not, I'm not gonna run you down. Because uh, this is a project that uh, it was in the firsthand of Councilwoman Angie Benjamin. She was the first person on the building, uh, chairperson and the committee. Now we're back at it again. And this is something that uh, we took a vote on to ask him to leave the keys uh with the clerk, uh, the president. So if we need to go in these buildings, we have a problem. Well, we insurance paid this money uh to get this building fixed. And some of the work has been done, but the floor has been. And uh, every time you call, uh, Ms. Davis, uh, I'm not finna go running up there standing at that mail door with the doorbell ringing, ringing, and nobody don't come to the door. You already got, you got a doorbell, you got uh cold locks on the door, and people standing there, you standing there, they looking at you. I'm, I'm not, that's not me, uh, when I'm trying to do something, I wanna do it the right way. And uh, we asked today, I asked Ms. Davis, uh, I called her and I asked her about the uh, the finishing of the repair. Because uh, it has not been. And she said that, you talk to the mayor, don't, you can't talk to me about that. I said, but you're the department here, you have the keys. I've been trying to get into the Dallas Academy Building for the longest to see, you know, she called Ms. Candy name. Well, Ms. Candy don't work there no more. I said, well, well, I didn't bring that, it wasn't about her, it's about me getting in the building to see what we need to finish up. And uh, we have a problem with going in. So I, I talked to someone when we do a vote, and uh, they, the mayor don't want to, the day, their operation don't want to re, uh cooperate with us. I did a little searching, and I found out that we can do a, a resolution saying that we would change all the lots on the, the city building and give the keys to the clerk and Ms. Davis get her keys back, because we're trying to move forward. We're not, we, we, we're trying to get this, this, these buildings back in, in, in operation. And uh, I think they're setting the old way of doing like they want to do. But there are other procedures that committees that we all assigned to, that we have a duty to do, uh, what we're supposed to do. So I just came to this, I would like the President, I would like to put a motion on the floor about this, because I can't get in that Dallas Academy Building to uh look at and see Mr. Jerry Pete said that uh, it should have been included in, in the repair that they came in and did, and which is, is not. And I don't know what else is in there that they did do, because for some reason, somebody don't want us to, to see it. So I will be putting that motion on the floor at the next council meeting. Also, I want to uh talk about this too, and President, but I just wanna ask you this question. I was reading something, I wanted to follow up on this. With our fire chief, uh, not having a fire chief, that we have one, he's in, he's a, he's, he's an. An interim fire chief right now. And how many months has he been in that position?
Maybe two months.
He's been there two months?
Maybe two.
About three months now?
Two months.
Okay, if, only the federal law, if he continues to be there before, what we have like, uh, before we make a decision? And the salary that uh, the, the, the fire chief made was like sixty-nine, what is it, sixty-nine thousand? And the salary he make is like sixty-nine thousand. And if we doesn't, if we don't uh, uh, make a decision before these months up, uh, that uh, he will reconsider getting that same salary if we, if we don't uh replace, get our fire chief in there?
We have a fire chief by the end of the fall.
Okay, can I ask you something? You said we have a fire chief by the end of the fall? Okay, I'm saying, you're saying we will have one, but I'm saying, uh, we don't, have you, you had the application? You had the application? So have you, you're the one looking at the application?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm saying the committee, um, the reason why I'm asking you is because we're part of your committee. And the reason I ask you that is because we're part of your committee of the public safety. And uh, I know you told us that you were gonna have some uh people, some people were putting in application. So have you already looked at, who's gonna make that decision?
First of all, we got to tell August the fifth with this money.
Okay.
Usually when people are submitting applications, you gather the applications, then you bring the committee together. They go through the application, I mean, the resume. Uh, then you set up the interviews. And then during the interview, it's the public safety committee along with the committee will uh, interview the candidates. It will be open to the budget.
Okay, that's why.
Yes, ma'am, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to compile, you know, give them a list, give them enough time to gather the resumes, then what we're doing is, as a committee, we'll come together, I'll make a copy, put together a folder uh, of all the people that submitted a resume. Then as a committee, we can come back and compile the questions. Also, I have asked Val Jones to serve on committee, she have agreed to serve, she's the former HR director. So she can give us some guidance, follow up the HR piece.
But that's why I, when, as someone asked, and I told him I didn't know, because you had, you had talked to us about it. My other question is, uh.
Councilwoman. You also asked who makes the decision, the council does, it's the council?
Um, that's what I'm saying, the council.
Whether there are interviews, whether there's a committee, whether any of those things happen or not happen, the council does.
Okay, well, I was asked a question, and I, I wanted to ask him.
We just bring forth the recommendations based on the committee, and that's why I asked council members to be part of.
That's why.
And that's why I feel like it's so important that we engage all entities, you know, the, the council and also the community.
Yes.
So, yeah, that's one of our appointments, and then the council brings back, you know, the top three or top two or top one. Then we move forward with a majority vote by the council.
And that's what I was saying, with the committee with us, that's why I try to engage everybody up here when we're trying to do something to move the city forward with these buildings. And uh, I agree what you said. And my other question is this, in our budget, uh, I just received some information, I had to run that down. You know, I was talking about the, oh, you asked me to bring the book of the Brownfield, the study done, I have that. Also, I received some more information today, uh, they're doing a second study to find out how much, yes. There's a second study doing to find out how much it's gonna cost. It's gonna cost to clean this property up. He could not give me, I had, I had to run it down. He could not give me the amount, you know, we said bring back the amount.
Yes, ma'am.
So it was told, and I got some information, I'm gonna give each council, so that y'all know what was in there, what they found. And also some information on uh matching money. And, and, and I have, I thought about this, I said, we're getting ready to go into budget year. And I would like to ask the council, this is something that the city owns it, and it was, I inherited in Ward Seven. Uh, a city property. Uh, some of the matching bounce money would be like twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand. And I wanted to ask in the middle of our budget, uh, if we could put aside, whenever they finish this study, that uh, we can get that money, use that money to clean that property up, up, up over there, you know? Because it said that, I read, I'm gonna give it to you, it have a matching, it say twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand. And when you got a city property that is not good to, for any use right now, uh, if, and to order for it to get it like it should, they said we would have to come up with a match, a matching money. So I would like to ask him to put that in the budget.
We can, if you want the budget in.
Yes, that's why I asked you.
Because it's not, hey, then could I find us a non-study?
And that's why they doing, and, and the reason I wanted to say, you might understand why I push so hard, because you know, you, where you at? Did you go by there and look at what I told you?
I did.
Now you see why I'm, I'm, I'm pushing. And this is why I wanted to take this letter, this information, and give it to our attorneys, because it has to be uh cut, it has to be cleaned up over there, because we have a school right there in the middle of. And also, we have people that go out there digging in there for, for iron.
Yes, ma'am.
And uh, it is not good. And right now, all I can do is now is to get it cleaned up for the time being, till we can uh decide what we can do with it.
Yes, ma'am. We're gonna have to get that to uh Attorney Jones, and information that you're talking about to give us back now.
And I need, and, and the reason why I push so hard, you know, school is getting ready to open. And uh, we need to uh, I need to get that done before school opens.
Okay, alright, Councilwoman Short.
Uh, I'm calling over email that was sent out uh, by Julie Ten from RDS. Suggested that we start a juncture process on those businesses that are in the, they're in the taxes.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have, is there any update on this process?
They, I think, paper arrangement, and they have uh submitted their first two months of payment. And I, I have a report, um, that I let Councilman pass through.
Yes, ma'am. I was curious, because I know that businesses that were listed as very delay.
Yes, ma'am.
And you need to pay the taxes.
Some of them have been crucial about the paper, but I, I, I'm gonna copy that.
Yes, ma'am. Well, just give us an update on that, too.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Council, uh, Councilwoman Thompson?
Yeah, I have another question. Uh, if I, you know, we requested once before for our tax collector to come and give us a, a money during the time with uh, like we have our treasurer do.
Mm-hmm.
When will she, when will, is she coming? Because she's been, she's been asked several times, she's up on, isn't she up on in the county?
Yes, ma'am.
What is the problem why she can't come before monthly and give a report?
So do you want her to, to sign?
Sure, we need to, we need to hear, you know, like you said, uh, we have money coming in from all. Don't she takes the money from the civil police department?
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you see, but I'm saying, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Everybody else give their report, I would, we would like for her to give us a report on uh, you know, so we can know just like Ms. Wade does.
Okay.
Ms. Wade.
Alright, any reports to this?
And ones that going out of business, that owe us tax money, we don't get that?
Uh, yes. Uh.
Avenue.
Avenue, yeah.
Okay, alright.
Well, I, no, I just asked a question.
I have a report for you.
Okay.
Any other, any other questions, Councilwoman?
No, no, I, you know, you asked a question, you asked a question.
Yes, ma'am. I would like to thank Councilwoman Jackson for your, for your.
Five services.
Your five services.
She's still writing right now.
All right, do I have a motion for adjournment?
I'm sorry.
Down the side.
I'm sorry.
To you.